I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
And the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of County Commissioner.
The duties of County Commissioner.
Of Brookings County.
Of Brookings County.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, then we need you to sign.
Newly elected Commissioner Doug Post.
And then I'll give these to the Finance Officer. So what I'm gonna tell you, Mr. Post, is, 'cause he was first, you just have to recite it, okay? The whole thing.
What was the first word again?
Raise your right hand. I state your name.
Aye, Doug Post.
Being duly elected.
Being duly elected.
To the position of County Commissioner.
To the position of County Commissioner.
Of Brookings County.
In Brookings County.
Brookings County, South Dakota.
Brookings County, South Dakota.
On the seventh day of January 2025.
On the seventh day of January 2025.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
And the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of County Commissioner.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of County Commissioner.
Of Brookings County.
Of Brookings County.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, Doug. And then I need your signature. Thank you very much.
Re-elected State's Attorney Dan Nelson.
Yeah.
Does like it?
Do I have to do this guy?
Oh, man. Put up with me.
I re- state your name.
I, Dan Nelson.
Being duly elected.
Being duly elected.
To the position of State's Attorney.
To the position of State's Attorney.
Of Brookings County.
Of Brookings County.
Brookings, South Dakota.
Brookings, South Dakota.
On this seventh day of January 2025.
On this seventh day of January 2025.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
I'm gonna back you up. That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
And the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of State's Attorney.
The duty of State's Attorney.
Of Brookings County.
Of Brookings County.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
And myself, re-elected Finance Officer Lori Schultz.
I state your name.
I, Lori Schultz.
Being duly elected.
Being duly elected.
To the position of Finance Officer.
To the position of Finance Officer.
Of Brookings County.
Of Brookings County.
Brookings, South Dakota.
Brookings, South Dakota.
On this seventh day of January 2025.
On the seventh day of January 2025.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
And the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Finance Officer.
The duties of Finance Officer.
Of Brookings County.
Of Brookings County.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge Stultemberg. Number six is the reorganization of the Board. Let's begin with the election of Chairperson for 2025. Does anyone have a motion for an appointment that they would like to make?
I'd like to appoint Larry Jensen as Chairperson of the 2025 Brookings County Commission.
I have a motion for the appointment of Commissioner Larry Jensen made by Commissioner Kelly VanderWaal. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, made by Commissioner Hostler for the appointment of Commissioner Jensen to Chairman of the Board for 2025. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, and the meeting is now yours, Commissioner Jensen.
Thank you. And I would take nominations for appointment of the Vice Chairperson for 2025.
I would nominate Commissioner VanderWaal.
We have a second? We have a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number seven on the agenda is an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. There is a five-minute time limit per person. Anyone wanting to speak during this agenda item must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. No commission action will be taken during this agenda item. Any requested action item may be scheduled for a future meeting date. We have one individual, Mallory Minor, would you please come forward?
Assuming you want me to talk into this? Good morning.
Good morning.
And thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me the opportunity to speak. This past fall, our county voted decisively to reject referred law 21 by a 60-40 margin. From conversations with fellow residents, I believe many South Dakotans interpreted the RL-21 rejection as a clear message that our state was a- was saying no to carbon pipelines for good. Unfortunately, that was not the case. Just days after the election, Summit Carbon Solutions filed a new application with an altered pipeline route. We must remain diligent in keeping residents of Brookings County informed about the new route and its potential risks. The prospect of a new carbon pipeline running through our land and near our communities poses significant dangers, and we must ensure that people understand these risks. Once again, I am urging the Commission to implement ordinances and setbacks to protect the citizens of Brookings County before the upcoming summit hearing with the PUC. Thank you for filing party status with the PUC. I trust that you will attend upcoming public sessions next week so that you can hear firsthand from South Dakota citizens like me and my family who do not want a dangerous carbon pipeline in our backyard. Finally, I would like to inquire whether our county has any regulations currently in place regarding pi- carbon pipelines. If so, if there's any information where I can access that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Item number eight on the agenda is consent agenda items. Do I have motion to approve, which would include the minutes, travel and education, personnel action notices, cellular authorizations, and human services report? Do I have motion to approve?
Moved to approve.
Second.
And motion a second. Any additions or corrections? Any comments? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
VanderWaal?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number nine is routine business, approval of the claims. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have motion a second and approve the claims. Any comments? Any additions? Call the roll, please.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
VanderWaal?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Can I interrupt?
Sure.
For the two new Commissioners, just so you know too, when you want to speak, you have to push the button on the microphone, so the green light lights up. It says, there's a little push button that will engage your microphone, and then when you're done, you can shut that off, and you'll have to talk directly into the microphone.
Thank you.
Just so you, just so you know, moving forward.
Item number B, unroutine business, is Department Head reports. Start where the Highway Department, Mr. Gostead.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Um, it's been pretty quiet out at the Highway Department. We haven't had much weather, but we are staying busy out there. We're doing some crack sealing on our future chip seals here for 2025. Uh, one of the roads that we're working on is up north of White, County Highway 40-42, and then also down by Sinai F, depending on what side of the county, uh, has any moisture on the roads. So there is some progress getting done, but, uh, like I said, with the weather, it's, it's really kinda kept us quiet. So that's all I have to report.
Yeah, any questions for Mr. Gostead?
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Sheriff Stanley?
Yeah.
Lori?
Good morning.
Morning.
As per ordinance 23-2, by February 1st of each year, I need to, um, inform you of the number of on-sale and off-sale liquor licenses that are unveil- available for this coming calendar year. Brookings County has seven on-sale licenses and six off-sale licenses. All seven of the on-sale licenses are in use, and there are none available right now. And there is one off-sale license, um, in use, so there are five of those available. Tax notices will be going out any day now, so we will all be popular again. Um, at the next meeting, I will present the mobile home list, uh, the delinquent list. We present that to the Board every January, and then I turn it over to the Sheriff's Office for collection. And then, uh, anything that is not paid by the end of June is actually, goes up for sale through auction through the Sheriff's Company Office. Um, so get those paid. Um, in February, there will probably be three days that our office will not be able to do motor V work due to the Department of Motor Vehicles switching over to a new system. So we will still be open, we will just not be able to renew license or do title work those days, and I'll let the public know closer, um, as, as that gets closer, because I really doubt that they're going to be ready to go on time. Um, so we'll, we'll see what rolls out with that. Otherwise, um, I don't have anything else, unless you have questions.
Any questions, Ms. Schultz? Thank you. Bob?
Good morning, and welcome to the new Commissioners.
Morning, Bob.
Thank you.
First thing we've got is next week, there is a series of, uh, public meetings and events for the carbon pipeline. And I, the closest one obviously is to Schmidt on January 16th at 11:30, and then there's one in Watertown on January 16th at 6:00 PM. I'm interested in going to the Watertown one. Is, is anyone here gonna go to the, the Schmidt one? I presume, I presume you would go to the Schmidt one since it's closer. Or just as close, so. But my plans are to go to Watertown, just so we can see what, what's the, the Schmidt group's saying, and then we can also get an understanding of what Watertown, the public's talking about up there. Because I feel Brookings County, the people, northern part of Brookings County would go to Watertown, and the people southern part would end up in the Schmidt, so. We plan on having a booth at the Brookings Home Show on February 7th and 8th. We typically set that up using local emergency planning commission or committee funds through the EPA to just outreach from the emergency management side of the house and show people where the hazardous material sites are in, in Brookings County. The, uh, we got our pre-disaster mitigation plan. We had our final meeting on December 30th, and that, right now, that is setting in, uh, Pier, and it's gonna go into Region 8 of FEMA, which is Denver, Colorado, for final approval. Next meeting, I will have an outside employment request for approval form submitted. I typically teach a planning course online through South Dakota State University in the spring and in the fall on the, uh, aspects of local and statewide planning. And last but not least, the Homeland Security Grant application is now open. It'll be open until February 14th, 2025. I specifically plan on working with the Sheriff to see what we can apply for from Brookings County side of the house. And this grant application is sent statewide, and we're in part of Region 6 of South Dakota Office of Emergency Management. So we only get so much money, we can't obviously spend all the money on one county. So, but we got a 10-county region. Me and the Sheriff will work together and figure out what the county wants to apply for, then we'll come back to you before we make the application on that. Any questions?
Any questions for Bob?
Bob, do you have any question, do you have any updates to share on the Midary Creek diversion?
The update on the Midary Township diversion project is the maintenance manual has been looked at by the Washington DC Office of whatever, D E N, D A N R up there. And they're in, uh, the, are contractors in the final process updating that plan. I don't have a, a last-minute update on that. Soon as that plan is updated, it's gonna be sent back to us, and the Drainage Board will have to have a meeting. And I don't wanna set that meeting until I get that plan in my hand and take a look at it. But, uh, I would envision sometime in February, I'll meet in as a Drainage Board to go over the complete projects.
Is there any plans for the Advisory Board before then, or not?
Well, I guess I need to look at the plan first and see what, what they recommend they, they need. But, um, yeah, I, I really wanna get it to the whole Drainage Board, which is the County Commission Acting as a Drainage Board sometime in February, so we can get moving on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Stephen Wheat, Department?
Good morning. Welcome, new Commissioners. I was on the agenda last commission meeting, I had a family emergency, so I would like to go over the 2024 year-end spray report. Um, I assume that is in your packets? Oh, I didn't see it. Um, anyway, just, just to let you know, for the township bills, we... Excuse me, township bills for the spring run was $15,520.29. That's what we brought in, or charged the townships. And the fall run was $19,638.98, for a total of $35,204.27. Uh, county road, uh, same thing, spring and fall run. It costed us 42, $42,706.50 to spray noxious weeds on the county roads. And then, uh, we had a contract for DOT gophers, spring run, fall run there, and the total beside, or to the right, excuse me. And then our total cost for spraying county roads and townships is $80,673.27. And down at the bottom is the total amount of chemical we purchased in 2024. I'm not gonna go through everything. Uh, I will ask, is there any questions on this? So that's for your records. 2023 chemical inventory is just to give you an idea of what we had in 2023 and the start of 2024. I don't know why ours is different. It is supposed to be 2024, I apologize. Is there any other questions on what I have there? Let me just add, the method in Escort is chemicals we used to keep the weeds down on the bridges and delineators. You'll see that about halfway down after the total, in the total amount of chemical bought in 2024. Why is yours so different, Stacy?
This is what you had given me for the packet from a few weeks ago, so I just took it out and put it into this packet.
I grabbed the wrong paperwork. Good job. Um, just so you know though, that's, that's what we have in, in the weed and pest shop.
That's what's left over for use in 2025, then?
Yes.
Okay.
And I suppose you're, uh, you're looking at, at pricing and stuff for whatever's coming for 25, or what you have to get to be able to have everything good deal?
Yes. Uh, 24D is going up, a lot, uh, is what I've heard from both chemical dealers. Uh, so it won't be a cheap deal this year. And, uh, Grayson PD and 3 will be staying about the same. And just so you know, I just want to remind you that we have the annual Weed and Pest Conference coming up in February, 19th, 20th, and 21st in Huron. Um, two individuals have to go to Huron for the conference in order to get the grant. I do not have anything else, unless you've got questions for me.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Ms. Keith.
Uh, also in Department Head reports, we have Sheriff's Department documents. Uh, I think that was in the... in our packet? Review? If there's any questions on that? Hearing none, we'll move on to regular business. Item A is Action Approved Resolution 25-01, a resolution setting pay for election officials in 2025. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have motion a second, any comments?
We do this resolution annually. We're not anticipating any elections in 2025, but in the off chance there's a special election or whatnot, then this, then this is in place and we're ready to go.
Okay. Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
VanderWaal?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B, Action Approved Resolution Number 25-02, a resolution setting vote center locations for countywide elections. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
And motion a second? Any comments?
I did hand out a new version of this resolution. It should be in your pile of papers in front of you this morning. There were just a few, just some kinda clarification, kinda typos from what you see here. Um, a couple of spellings and making sure it says church instead of center, and, and a zip code change. So just some minor, some minor corrections, but the, the one that is the hard copy in front of you is what we will be approving.
Okay. Any questions from the Board? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Hostler?
Aye.
VanderWaal?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, Action Approved Resolution Number 25-03, a resolution setting meeting pay and per diem rates for volunteer county boards for 2025. Do I have motion to approve?
Moved to approve.
Second.
And motion a second, any comments?
These three boards are the boards that, uh, do get paid per meeting, weed zoning and the extension board. Um, mileage, we do reimburse according to state rates, and then the per diem as well, according to current state rates. Uh, we just set this resolution annually so that those boards, um, know what to expect, and those department heads know what to expect.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
VanderWaal?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D, Action Approved Agreement Number 25-01, Amendment to Brookings County Agreement 21-40, a State of South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Improvement Grant Agreement for rehab- rehabilitation slash replacement, local administrative. Do I have motion to approve?
Moved to approve.
Second.
And motion a second? Comments?
Okay, these agreements that you're gonna be looking at here, uh, the DOT changed the way they're going to be dispersing the, uh, cash on these, um, bridge improvement grants that we've already been awarded. This particular one, and then there's the following one, were approved in 21. And we need to extend the timeline, um, in order to complete this project, which this project and the next one are already bid. Uh, but this will distribute 75% of the money that we were awarded in the grant originally. So the, these next two will be that, and then, uh, the following, uh, three will be just to amend the, uh, dispersment of money when those projects are bid and awarded. So the first two are, are already bid, and then the following three, or the following three, two, sorry, the following two will be, uh, bid at a later date. But the dispersment of money is how that's going to, is why we're amending this. The state needs this amended agreement. Is there any questions on that?
You say dispersment, is that when the contractor starts, or when they're completed, or?
We've already, uh, bid this project, and it's approved by the DOT and the Commission, uh, previously. Now, once, uh, we get this agreement back to them, we will receive 75% of the funds originally agreed on, um, when we got this project, but we'll receive those immediately instead of afterwards. Does that make sense?
Yeah. They're keeping 5%.
25% until completion.
Okay. Was it, wasn't the project an 80-20, or no?
This particular project was a, uh, 60-40.
Okay. Okay.
So.
We'll get seventy-five percent of the forty percent.
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
That's our responsibility, yes.
And the bridge project will be completed in this calendar year, then?
We, uh, this, this project and the, and the next, uh, one that you'll be looking at are already currently bid. And we have a contractor set in place, uh, to do this project. The state needs the amendment on this project and the next one because the, these were awarded in two thousand and twenty-one and we had, uh, four years to complete. We need to extend that because they won't be completed until twenty twenty-five. Most likely will not close out until twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
In front of you too is the original agreement, twenty-one forty, um, with the bridge number and project number. And this is, this one was, um, awarded to Holloway.
So then you'll see in the agreement there, the original agreement was all the work had to be completed by February twenty tw- twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. So that's why the state needs to, the, this amendment. Then it also allows them with this agreement to dis- distribute the twenty-five, the seventy-five percent of the original forty percent.
Yep.
Brian, is there any stipulation on completion date on that?
The completion date's been, uh, been set forth in the bid documents. And the completion date for these two projects will be, uh, November first substantial completion of twenty twenty-five.
That's what I was concerned about in the budget, how it would affect the finance.
So what we've done now is not budgeted for anything basically in the highway. So that when we get these funds in, we'll do an automatic supplement then to the highway budget so we can start using those funds to pay for the project. Cause before it, we needed to have, like, prove that we had the money to pay for these projects. And then they weren't getting done for a year or two or three. And it was just kind of causing us more grief on our budgeting standpoint. So moving forward, we're not going to budget, um, anything until we know that the project is going to happen. And then auto automatically supplement the, the money that we get from the state.
Any other questions? Okay, call the roll, please.
Post?
Yeah.
Miller?
Hi.
Hostler?
Hi.
Vanderwall?
Hi.
Johnson?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item number E, action approved agreement twenty-five dash zero two, amendment one to Brookings County Agreement, number twenty-one dash forty-one. A state of South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Improvement Grant Agreement for rehab replacement local administration. I have motion approve.
So moved.
Second.
They have motion and a second. This is similar to the last.
Correct, except for this one, uh, in the original, uh, bid we did, we, we, uh, shot for the twenty, or the fifty percent. So this will be a fifty-fifty split. So we'll get fifty percent of the, seventy-five percent of the fifty percent that we agreed on. Um, but there again, same type of situation where we had to have the work, uh, performed after, uh, February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. There again, this one is bid out and it will be substantially complete by November first of twenty twenty-five.
Any other questions? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Miller?
Hi.
Hostler?
Hi.
Vanderwall?
Hi.
Post?
Hi.
Johnson?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item F, action approved agreement number twenty-five dash zero three, amendment one to Brookings County Agreement, number twenty-two dash three six. A state of South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Improvement Grant Agreement for rehabilitation slash replacement local administration. I have motion approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Comments?
Like I mentioned, these projects have not been bid out yet, but will be, uh, in the future. But this, uh, revised agreement will allow the DOT to distribute seventy-five percent of the original agreed upon fifty percent.
Okay. But you don't, these haven't been, so you won't have a completion date, then?
We won't have a completion date on these, but it is, uh, extending the completion date because we know they weren't, they are probably not going to be completed by February fourth, twenty twenty-six. February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-six. So we're extending that already because we know that, uh, construction's not going to happen by then.
When do you plan on getting bids and stuff for these?
They, these two that we're looking at right now, I reached out to, uh, the engineer and the DOT on these. Uh, we're still in the plan approval stage. So that is most likely, we're going to be looking at probably the end of twenty twenty-seven to complete these.
So we receive these funds, they'll be earmarked for these projects, then?
That was the intention when we talked about this at budget time is that when these funds would be, uh, taken in, that we would put them in a separate line in the highway budget.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? Call the roll, please.
Hostler?
Hi.
Vanderwall?
Hi.
Post?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Johnson?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item G, action approved agreement number twenty-five dash zero four, amendment one to Brookings County Agreement, number twenty-two dash thirty-seven. A state of South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Improvement Grant Agreement for rehab slash replacement local administration. I have motion approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments?
Same thing on this one. This has not been, uh, let out for bids yet. Uh, but we need to adjust the, uh, the completion time and then that will also allow the state to, um, immediately reimburse us uh, before construction happens, the seventy-five percent of the original agreed upon fifty percent cost share.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Vanderwall?
Hi.
Post?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Hostler?
Hi.
Johnson?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item H. Action to remove Sterling Township's rural access infrastructure application from the table. Do I have motion to remove?
So moved.
Second.
They have motion and a second. Comments? Hearing none, other comments? All in favor of removing? Say aye.
Hi.
Hi.
Post same time? Remove from the table. Made a motion by Crowman, second by Hostler to approve the Sterling Township's rural access infrastructure funding application for twenty twenty-five. Uh, we're in the comments. Um, you have any further comments?
So I had visited with, um, Michelle Vanderweird is the clerk with Sterling Township. The concerns with this were the quote that we had received and once, uh, Highway Superintendent Gustad had a chance to review that quote in that application, the quote was significantly lower than he thought that the project would come in at. The whole quote was for eleven thousand and, and some and, um, he thinks the, the culverts themselves will be sixteen thousand plus. And so we had talked to Sterling Township about getting an updated quote, um, more so to kind of let the, make sure that the township is aware. Um, cause they're responsible for twenty percent of those costs. That we wanted them to be aware of what that twenty percent could look like. Um, I mean, this is part of our rural access infrastructure project. The county has the funds available. So, um, from our perspective, it's not, um, such a, such a concern, but we wanted to make sure that the township was aware of their costs. After a conversation with, with Ms. Vanderweird, they're going to wait, um, so to, to reapply. There was just wasn't time now and we have to, we have to get these approved by the fifteenth of January, uh, per the statutes regarding this program. So they're going to wait. Um, the culverts aren't in such a condition that they need to move on them immediately. So they are going, their plan is to reapply for twenty twenty-six and then provide that updated quote and all of the updated paperwork at that time. So, um, basically at this time you can, you know, basically vote this down and they'll reapply in twenty-six.
So basically you recommend nonapproval. Correct. Call the roll, please.
Post?
Yeah.
Miller?
Hi.
Hostler?
No.
Vanderwall?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Motion fails.
Item I, action approved the Brookings Register, Volga Tribune, Tri-City Star, and Elkton Record as illegal papers for the Brookings County in twenty twenty-five. I have motion approve.
Moved to approve.
Second.
They have motion and a second. Any comments?
These are the four newspapers that are published in the county and we post all of our legal notices in all four of those newspapers throughout the year.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Hi.
Post same sign. Motion carried. Item J is an action to approve the official depositories for the Brookings County Funds and Monies for the twenty twenty-five as follows. Richland State Bank, Bankstar Financial, Citizen State Bank, First Bank and Trust of Brookings, and Dakota Bank. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
They have motion and a second. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Hi.
Hi.
Post same sign. Motion carried. Item K is action approved cell phone reimbursements for twenty twenty-five. Do I have motion to approve?
Moved to approve.
Second.
They have motion and a second. Any comments?
This list is just provided to you every year, um, so you know, I guess I could bring that up. So you know who is receiving cell phone reimbursements. And then as, as any new reimbursement requests come through, it's, uh, kind of handled through the consent agenda, um, at upcoming meetings. So I know we had, there were a few cell phone reimbursement, um, authorizations in the consent agenda today for the, two new commissioners, for instance, so you won't see them on this list. But they were approved earlier at the, in the meeting and moving forward, then they would get added to this list.
Okay. Many questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Miller?
Hi.
Hostler?
Hi.
Vanderwall?
Hi.
Post?
Hi.
Johnson?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item L is action approved board appointments for twenty twenty-five.
I did hand out, before you get going through this, I did hand out a hard copy of this list for everyone. So sometimes it's nice just to kind of fill it out as you go.
I think we kind of go through them, then at the end, uh, vote for approval. So we'll start at the, um, the top here. BCOAC Advisory Board, it's a monthly meeting. Commissioner Hostler, you want to stay on that board?
Yeah, I can stay on that board.
Okay. I will also stay on there. The next is, uh, Brookings Area Transit Authority, BETA. It's a quarterly meeting. Interested in that? Dave, are you?
I would take that one.
Uh, the next would be Brookings County Regional Railroad Authority as needed. There's actually two positions. Would, uh, Commissioner Post and Miller be? Acceptance to that?
Yes.
Who, who is, who is on that? Dave?
And Doug.
Yep, Doug.
Dave and Doug.
Brookings Economic Development Corporation, uh, monthly.
Yeah, I was the alternate on that and Ben moved up to the, to the seat, so I'll take that first one.
Okay. Brookings Economic Development Corporation, uh, alternate?
I would.
Interested in there?
I would take that one.
Okay, um, Brookings County Extension Board Quarterly. Doug, do you have interest, uh, in the extension board? Domestic Abuse Shelter.
I currently sit on that. Uh, if there is any interest in somebody else going on that, I could give that up, but I could take that as well.
Uh, Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness Board?
I would like that one.
Okay. East Central Regional Communications Council, the chair and the vice chair, take those. Um, First District Association Local Government, uh, Quarterly. Growth Partnership Board, which is a quarterly meeting.
I'll take that one.
Hospital Board Ex officio, that was a monthly meeting. Is there any interest there? Dave or Doug, are you interested in the hospital board or?
What's that?
Are the, a hospital board, it's, it's up to you.
I'll take it.
Housing and Redevelopment Commission, which is a quarterly meeting.
Doug said yes.
Doug? Okay. Okay, InterLakes Community Action Governing Board, bi-monthly. Okay, uh, Joint Powers Board, which is quarterly.
I'm on that one. I can, I can stay on unless, uh, somebody wants to go on it.
Okay, there's two, two positions. Uh, Stacy, were you interested in?
Yeah, that's for this building. Um, we just discussed kind of needs for, for this facility. The city has a couple of, of, um, their assistant city manager and I think their community development director sit on that. So, I mean, I would be willing to be a voting member on that. I attend all of those meetings and create the agendas now, so.
You'd like to appoint Stacy to that board?
Okay. The next is Inter-Governmental Meeting Group Quarterly. I'll stay on there. And then there's another position there also. Okay. Next one, the Chair does, uh, Local Emergency Planning Committee. Next is Planning and Zoning Board Member Monthly.
I'd like to do that.
And then the alternate would be?
I can take it too.
What's that? Public Affairs Committee.
I'm on that one, so I'll continue that.
Weed and Pest Board. Doug, you interested? Youth and Family Services Advisory Board for the JDC as needed.
Yeah, I'm on that one, so I can keep that one unless somebody wants to go on it.
I think you're a good fit with your experience.
Yeah.
Host, you stay on there then?
Yeah, I'll stay on both of those.
Modernity Township Drainage, there's two positions, I'll stay on there. Samara Avenue Project. Kelly and I are both on there, just continue. And also the two hundred and fourteenth Street Project, same. The next one's County Coroner is Dave Erickson. Deputy County Coroner is Sheriff Stanwick. And Deputy County Coroners are all deputies. The next is Highway Superintendent to a two-year appointment, South Dakota Codified Law thirty one dash eleven dash one, expired at the end of twenty twenty five, is that correct? Mr. Gustad is, has that position. Move on to Department Liaisons, BCOAC. Hostler?
Yeah, I can take that one.
Community Health. Doug VB, Community Health. Next one's Emergency Management, the Chair does that one. Equalization.
I'd like to do that.
Extension.
That's typically the board member.
Well, it's it's not quite the same, Extension Board, but it's kind of the same, but usually the Extension Board, yeah. Finance Office, Dave? The Highway, I guess I'll take that. Register of Deeds. Dave, you interested in that?
Okay.
Sheriff Detention Center.
I can take that one.
Good luck.
And State Attorney Courthouse, Human Services.
And I can remain on that one as well.
Weed and Pest. Doug, would you take that? And zoning and drainage?
I'd like to do that.
So double check, did they all completed? Okay, do we have a motion to approve board appointments for twenty twenty five?
Moved to approve.
Second.
And motion to second, any comments? I'd just like to thank everybody for stepping up and taking some positions. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carried. Item number eleven is Commission Department Directors Report.
Okay, so we have the NACO, National, NACO is National Association of Counties, the Legislative Conference, it's coming up March first through the fourth in Washington DC. That early registration deadline is coming up here at the end of the week. We do save some money on registration if we get folks registered before that, so I'd like to know if who, who would like to attend that ledge conference, I know Kelly has said, anybody else plan to go? Dave, yeah?
To go.
Okay. Is that it for now, and what we'll do is work on getting registration and then usually the hotel expenses are tied to the registration, they usually have we can get that all kind of done in one foul shoot, but then we ask that, we can work with you, but ask that you do kind of your own planning as far as flight and whatnot, and then we'll just get you reimbursed for that, because I don't know what time you prefer or if you prefer an aisle seat or a window seat and all of those fine details that go with flights, so but we'll work with you and get that all figured out, so.
The question I have, if two are going, will we be moving the March fourth meeting then, or?
So the March fourth meeting is the day that that wraps up. I don't know, we can maybe can look at the itinerary for the meeting and see when you might plan to return, if if both of you are going to be gone and not back, we'll probably have to look at, consider moving that March fourth meeting. I mean, we'll still have a quorum with three.
Right.
So I guess it's, you know, some discussion to be had there, but I think we could look at the itinerary for the meeting too and see if it's something where you'll stay through the fourth or come back on the third. We could take a look at that and then we can maybe make a decision at the next meeting.
Or they could attend remotely also.
Could attend remotely, yeah, via phone, so.
Okay.
But we'll look at that. Let me write this down here. We have an invite to the Volga Fire Department's County Feed that's coming up next Monday, the thirteenth, over at the Volga Fire Department, the social at five thirty and the dinner at six thirty. As part of my report too, there was the South Dakota Pipeline Association, they're having some emergency response exercises across the state coming up in February, a little ways out yet. There will be one session here in Brookings, it's out at, I believe out at the Dakota Bank Center, Wednesday, February twenty sixth at eleven thirty. Registration is required for that. If you would like me to register you for that, let me know and I can do that.
Hold on.
Larry, yes? Doug, yes? Anybody else? For now, it's a little ways out, but it'll be on the notices, so if, you know, something comes up and you do want to attend, you can let me know. We received some information regarding a new four H regional youth educator position that the state has created. That position will be supporting local four H programs and our local four H educator, Sonia Mack. There's information and kind of an informational letter and an introduction to Julia Thaden, who is that new person in that position here for, for Brookings County. Also included with my report were BEDC's twenty twenty four highlights, it's kind of on a postcard, that was included with my report. Other than that, just some upcoming dates. The Fire Department Feed, as we had mentioned, you know, as mentioned earlier, there are a number of those PUC public hearings. I can have noticed the ones in our area. January fifteenth, that Wednesday at five PM at Southeast Tech down in Sioux Falls. The one in the sixteenth at eleven thirty at De Smet, and then again Thursday, the sixteenth, that evening up in Watertown at the Ramkota Hotel. Monday, the twentieth offices will be closed for Martin Luther King Junior Holiday. Brookings Day at the Capitol in Pier, I will need to know who plans to attend that and if you plan, the chamber usually takes a bus or charter bus or two out there. I don't think there's any cost to go, but they, they do need to know for numbers who A, they want to know who to plan for being out there and whether or not you're going to be on the bus, so Kelly is planning to go? Anybody else planning to go to Pier?
I'm planning, I'll, I'll be driving myself, so I won't be going on the bus if that, if they need to know that.
Okay. Anybody else? Anybody else going? Larry, are you going to go?
Yeah, put me down.
Dave?
I'll be gone as well.
You're going to be gone?
Yep.
Okay.
You're going or going to be going?
No, I'm out of town.
Well, let me know if you're going to drive, ride on the bus or drive separate, because I'll need to let the chamber know then, and that's coming up here fairly quickly here in a couple of weeks, a couple, two weeks from tomorrow, Brookings Day. And then a little bit further out, President's Day Holiday on February seventeenth, and then, as I had mentioned earlier, that Pipeline Training on February twenty sixth, and then again the ledge conference, March first through the fourth. That's all I have unless you have questions for me.
Stacy, just the four H youth coordinator will be housed out of where?
I, not with us, I believe they'll have probably an office maybe on campus, but there are a regional person, so they have, they're responsible for a number of counties, so we don't have to worry about having an office space for that person, so.
Next item is number twelve, State's Attorney's Office Report. Okay, Commissioner reports and discussion items. Commissioner Vanderwall.
Thank you, on Wednesday, December eighteenth, I attended the retirement party for Commissioners Bartley and Commissioners Krogman. I'd like to thank those two fine individuals for the hard work that they've dedicated to this county. I, in fact, have learned a lot from those two individuals. On Friday, December twentieth, I attended the special commission meeting here and I did not make the December thirtieth commission meeting at the fire on Main Street here in Brookings. That's my report, thank you.
Commissioner Post, anything to report?
In my whole hour of being a commissioner now, not a whole lot.
Okay.
I appreciate the opportunity to serve and looking to fill the big shoes that I've left this position.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller.
I, I would say the same thing, I'm excited about this opportunity, eager, nervous, all of the above, so looking forward to learning from all of you and appreciate the opportunity.
Mr. Hostler.
Yeah, on December eighteenth, also attended the retirement party for the previous Commissioners Bartley and Krogman. Also had on the eighteenth a BEDC board meeting. On the twentieth, attended that commission special meetings and then also on the thirtieth. The thirty first, we had another BEDC special meeting and then on the second, we did a domestic abuse shelter Zoom meeting. And that is my report.
Okay. On the seventeenth, I did, did visit the new Ivy Center being built over there, Eastern Mental Health area, it's quite extensive and it looks like it'll be a nice facility when it's completed. On the eighteenth, I also attended the Bartley-Krogman Retirement. I then went out to the East Brookings Businessmen's Meeting and gave a report on two hundred and fourteenth Street. After that, I did go out to the BCOAC, Santa Claus out there, and I'd like to thank all the people that showed up and also all the volunteers that helped out that evening, it was a good event and a good number of kids went through there. On the twenty third, I did, happened to stop at the Highway Department and attended the retirement for Dale Nibone, Equipment Operator with the Highway Department. On the thirtieth, also attended the pre-disaster mitigation meeting and also the two special meetings that we had. With that, that's all I have. Moving on to item number fourteen. Executive Session in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law one dash twenty five dash two, parentheses one, personnel, do I have motion to enter into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
And motion to second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post same time, we're in executive session.